Okay, good morning, everybody. So I think we have somebody new on that, Nelson, so maybe we can just go around and introduce ourselves real quick. And maybe just give your name, how long you've been on the commission and, you know, your role like Mike. So I'm Kate Donahue, I've been on the commission. Hi, Matt. Hey, Vince.
Morning.
I don't even know how long, 20 years, something like that, Vince, how long have we been doing this? But I also run a chemical manufacturing company in Stratford. Amanda?
You're on mute?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. It's early. Amanda Went, I've been on the commission just under a year and I've been handling marketing.
Mike?
Morning, Mike. I get the sales principal here at Trumbull High School. I've been in this role for three years and part of the commission in the past three years.
It's like, oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Jens Howlon. I've been on the commission for, it must be four years at least. I lose count. And I've been involved with some of the technical stuff. And I also work as a videographer.
Laura?
Hi, Laura Walden. I'm the program manager here and I do pretty much all the stuff to keep the station on the air.
Yeah. You're not kidding.
Right, Vince?
I'm Vince Feeny. I'm a CPA and I've been on the commission, I think as long as Kate has, if I'm not mistaken.
I've lost count.
Yeah, me too.
Jeff? Jeffrey Ansteinberg, I'm the technology manager for the Trumbull Board of Ed. I've been in the role just about three years and the commission is about three years, almost three years.
Matt, say.
I'm Matt. I edit and also do videography. I've been on here for about three years, but I've been working as a videographer for a while, about seven years now, I think.
Yep, an old hand. And Bill?
Bill Chin, I'm the Towns Director of IT and I guess I've been around since this officially started as commission.
Yeah. And Matt, Nelson, you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah. Again, in television and film in some way since 1995.
Awesome. So I want to have a follow-up conversation with you, so we'll do that, not in the meeting. All right, so I think I hit everybody. All right, so let's move forward. Bill, do we have any public comment?
There are currently no members of the public attendance.
All right, then we'll move on to approval of our October 7th meeting minutes, which I set out as the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Jens.
A second.
Thanks, Vince. Any corrections, additions, comments? Okay, then let's call the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 7th meeting? Aye.
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 Okay, commissioners, we still need one, which is why I want to talk to you, Matt Nelson. We're always looking for people that can add some value to the team, so I'll send you an email, see if maybe we can grab a few minutes on the phone. Any other, any other suggestions or recruiting success on this? Okay, Matt, there's going to be a lot of pressure, man.
I went to the, I went to the dinner earlier this week.
Oh, you did? How was it?
Commissioners dinner. I would say that's worth all the work over 12 months.
Really?
Definitely. It was great, yeah.
It was wonderful.
I'm trying to make it attractive to become a commissioner, you know.
Okay. I'll make, I, this just last two weeks, after work, things have just been crazy, so I will try harder next year. Okay, videographers, you guys are doing an incredible job. Well, Laura.
Well, first of all, I can't take credit for that. That's all Jeff Cochran, he has been, and Nick Dodana, they have really been recruiting and doing a great job for us. Matt Nelson had had, I think it was Kimberly had come to a soccer game to train with you, so she is ready to get up and running. You know, unfortunately, it's the end of the season, so there just hasn't been a lot of games for the kids to shadow, but Kimberly is also going to be joining us on election night, so props to her for jumping in with both feet.
And then when does sports start up after Thanksgiving? Is that right?
Yeah, soccer. Well, concerts, I'll get to that when we get to programming, but we're gonna, yeah, we're kind of in a lull right now, which is okay. It's quieter, you know, quieter time where it's more adult education, but sports is kind of, you know, on hold.
All right, then, we're going to review the station policies. I haven't haven't done that, so Laura, which of us is taking the lead on that, on scheduling a meeting for you and me and Amanda? Can you call, can you?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
I can do that. Yeah, I will make myself a note.
And you have the the current policy?
Yes. Yes. And
You need to send that out too, because I'm sure Amanda has.
Okay, yes, I'm sure she'll need to.
Yeah, I don't have it.
It's also, I'll send it to you as a digital file, so you can, you know, you can make markups to it, but it's also on the station's website. If you want to just take a look at it now, you know, without, but like I said, I'll give you the digital copy that you can print and markup and.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to finance. So we're in good shape on our budget. We got all the approvals, which will hit when we get down to technical on the server and router replacements, so that is, you know, POs in, they're, they've started order equipment.
Yep.
So that project is moving forward, thankfully, and we did get it done through emergency legislation, so we didn't have to wait for posting in the newspaper and all that, so the town council was very supportive. We appreciate that. Okay, budgeting time for next fiscal year that starts July 2026, I'm going to start to get asked for that, so we'll probably need to approve a budget at our next meeting, so we really need to talk about some additional capital investment, so the things I've got on the list for the agenda are closed captioning, additional studio, quick make cameras and other. Laura, you want to talk about closed captioning and why we need to talk about that?
Sure, that's actually something that's coming down the pike for ADA compliance, which our station will need to be compliant with by, I believe it's April 2027. There are certain things that are being rolled out and closed captioning is one of them. There are, YouTube does it automatically, so any meetings that get posted there, that's fine. I believe there's a way, it looks like there's a way to do it in Zoom, but I, you know, again, which I've seen, Bill, some meetings are captioned and others aren't, I'm not sure why or why not, which is fine, but you know, if that's something that.
Sorry, Laura, you can just press the show captions bottom.
But I mean, when it's recorded on, on IT's end, I don't know if it's the host who has it, you know, I don't know who has to generate the captions, if that makes sense.
It's generated automatically, it's the player.
But, but what I, but like, is, does it have to come from IT? Like, do they have to do it, or is any panelist?
In my experience, no, these days at least, nobody has to do anything.
It's the user.
That's it, it doesn't.
You really don't have to, unless of course, the player that we use in the carousel or whatever we want to call it.
But.
It is an old player, then. But it shouldn't be anything that we have to, to put too much or if any effort into.
Well, like I said, when a meeting is recorded on Zoom, Bill, I notice it's not consistent. Some meetings have captions, others do not, as I said, I don't know if, if it's IT, you know what I mean? I don't know if the host has to turn on, no, they don't, any panelists can turn them on, or, okay.
So, so are you taking, are you taking the raw footage from Zoom when you log in to download that video? Or are you looking at the, so YouTube, when we live stream, YouTube does all this closed captioning automatically with no.
Okay.
Also, if you replay it afterwards, you know, after the live stream.
But I get what Laura's, what Laura's getting at is, in order for us to have a program that we can put on the air with the captions, can that happen when it's recorded, or do we have to do it in post-production?
It would be dependent on the player that opens when you select that video. So let's say you go to trumbles.tv, trumblesps.tv and you want to look at a, you know, a town council meeting from last week. If the player that opens when you click that link doesn't support closed captioning, then you can't do it, but any player these days should support closed captioning, so it sounds like something we need to talk about, the software vendor about, you know. And what, because it's not YouTube that opens it, I don't know what player they use, but it's embedded. And it may have a closed caption, I didn't look specifically last time.
Correct. And again, if I download something, you know, if I'm downloading a Zoom meeting from YouTube and the captions are already there, when it goes on to Flexlight, you know, the playing server, those captions will stay embedded. I think the issue, and I also need to do a little bit more research, because Premiere Pro has has the ability to add captions as well, so I just need to do a little bit more research about that. I haven't, again, I haven't, I've just been focusing on elections, so once elections over, then I'll have room in my brain for non-election stuff. But that's definitely something I need to look into, because again, if that's something that Premiere Pro can do without an additional investment, then great, you know, it's something we don't.
Thing is, you can't, once you put those titles on, you can't turn them off, so everybody gets titles.
Exactly.
And I really think we should push it out to the client, that's, that's the only, well, not only, that's the way, the most productive way doing it.
I'm sorry, Jens, I just want to clarify, when you say push to the client, you mean, do you make it dependent on the user, or just push it out?
I mean, that whatever, whatever player is open, when somebody wants to, that player has to have closed captioning functionality, just like the Zoom player we're using now.
We also have to, it has to show up when we put it on the station. So where does that responsibility lie? Where does that functionality lie? Somebody tunes into channel, you know, whatever number we are on spectrum. Are the closed captions going to show up? Can they activate it, or is it something we have to do post-production before it ends up on the station? So Laura, if you're against and work on that, that would be great.
Yes, I will work on.
For our budgeting requirements. And then you need to look at anything else that you want, you know, that's a capital expense for next year.
Okay, and then I know the next thing on the, on our project list with DNR was the control upgrading the switcher. Which is the, you know, which would be, that was part of the initial document that they had sent us, which the server upgrade is part of. So the next phase was the, the switcher in the control room. The existing switcher still works, but it's, it predates me and I've been there, I think almost 10 years.
So we need a quote from him, from them.
I'll get a separate.
Do we, do we even use all the features that are in the existing switcher? I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to think what, what would make it critical. I mean, I would like to get a new switcher, but what would make it critical for us?
It still works, but what we are coming up against is that, like, one, one bit of functionality that Jeff and I have both come up against is that I can't pull in a video to the switcher, like when we do graphics, you can actually, you can pull in a, you know, a PNG, like for the election night, for the results show, we can pull up the results, but if we want to roll a B-roll piece, we have to actually run it on the computer, like we have to play it back through a player on another computer and use that as an input. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's, that's not, and it look, you see the player on the bottom, it just looks less polished than it could be. And, and again, you know, and it's also, like I said, the, it's, it's a 10, 15-year-old piece of equipment, it's still running, but you know, the proposal is to upgrade it to the same streaming equipment, excuse me, that we have in council chambers and in the Board of Ed. And what we are proposing to do for, excuse me, what we're proposing to have as backup for the sling studio live streaming equipment, so everything is consistent across the board, so that if a videographer or students can use the equipment in the TCTV studios, they can pretty much plug and play anywhere within the town to be able to run a live-streamed event.
It makes a ton of sense, yeah.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah, so that would be a V-Mix, a V-Mix solution.
Exactly, yes, with a stream deck.
Right.
And then Kate, I think the streaming, a portable streaming solution should be something that we put on the budget. And I'd like to, and again, I know Matt, I think you and I had talked about it, I'd like to kind of also throw it out to, you know, Jens, I can send it to you, I'd like to put together, you know, what we're proposing to Matt and to Garrett and to Jens, to people who've, you know, the guys who are in the field and have used this stuff before.
Exactly how we should be thinking. So Laura, I'll leave it to you and Matt and Jens to put a list together with numbers.
Okay.
And justification, so we can hold that into our whole presentation. Even though our budget, you know, probably won't be presenting until January. But you have to talk about our meeting scheduling, do you need to add that to the agenda?
Okay.
Okay, great. Anything else on budget stuff that we need to talk about now?
Nothing I can think of at the moment.
Okay, awesome. And on to programming.
Programming, so fall sports is wrapping up and both Matts have been really doing a great job with the camera work on the football games. This past football game, we had a two-camera shoot, Matt Schlenk was running the, he was running the control, Matt Nelson was up top with Jeff Altman, and then Memphis, one of my student videographers was on the field. And they had, I mean, it was humming, it was, it looked great. My husband was watching from home, he's like, it was like the best one I'd seen yet, it looked awesome. Which is great. And the other thing that he appreciated, so that was probably, I'm guessing that was you, whichever Matt it was, thank you. During halftime, they actually switched off Jeff's, like, hold music, for lack of a better word, and put on the camera mic, so you could hear the music that was accompanying the dancers and you could hear the marching band. So my husband, being a band parent, we appreciated that. So it looked great. I'm hoping that we can get, I know we've got one videographer for each of the next two games. And so we have one videographer for each of the next two games, hopefully we can get two, so we can do it again. The good news about the Thanksgiving game is that it's at home, so that's always, yes, Trump, it alternates between Trumbull and St. Joe's, and this year it's at Trumbull. Which is nice, because our press box, you know, it's home, we're comfortable with everything. So that will be nice.
We should be promoting that pretty heavily.
Yes.
Because I don't go to the games anymore like I used to, I'm busy getting ready for Thanksgiving, but to have that on would be, you know, if I can watch while I'm cooking, would be awesome.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's nice.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you, Amanda.
And that's, like, that's typically Amanda, one of the shows that gets the highest viewership.
Oh, okay. Oh, great.
On our numbers, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's see if we can bump it up.
Yeah, so that, that's, that will conclude the, the fall sports season. I think there's only two football games left, that's it for the fall sports. Winter picks up early December, which I'll be sending out to the videographer soon, and then concert season, everybody's favorite, is coming, but the good news is with all these students, it's a great opportunity between the sports and the concerts, it's good opportunities for the students. So that is where, that's the general programming. Again, we're still covering, you know, the government meetings and everything. Original productions, we just finished the senior center tour, big thanks to Kyle and Ronnie and Michelle, they did a great job there. So that was a quick tour, I'm going to put that up this week between the, you know, between the shows as an interstitial. I've been working with the Town Sustainability Coordinator to do some interstitial programming. We've both been, you know, we've both been busy with, me with election night programming, they have a couple initiatives happening next Saturday, so Mari and I are going to connect, you know, we're going to work on some stuff. We've actually, she came in and spoke with the Soaring Eagle Studios kids, so I know that Jeff and the student producer are going to be putting some kids on that, because that, we, we figure that's an easy recurring segment. And they, there's a million topics that they can cover, so that's going to, hopefully that will be part of their show. The other thing with original productions, which kind of dovetails into election night, is that so just to go into election night, if whoever doesn't know, but we're working with Katie Boland again, with her We the People students, and they are creating the content for the election night programming. TCTV is responsible for all of the technical stuff, and so we've got our crew, we've got a full crew, we've got videographers, and then Matt Nelson is going to be running the board, because unfortunately Matt Schlenk is working at Yale that night. And then, so, but we've, Garrett's going to help out as well, so, and Kimberly's going to help, Memphis is still, he needs to confirm, but we're okay, because I don't think the cameras are going to move too much. Dennis is going to help also. So, yeah, so we are all set with the crew. I met with Katie yesterday, she's, her kids, you know, just getting them the final what to wear, what not to wear, you know, how to dress, make sure your scripts are ready to go. Tomorrow, Tim from DNR is coming, I'm meeting him in the studio, so we're going to make sure that technically everything is ready to go. As far as the overlap between election night and original programming, Katie Boland has her students create a lot of content, and we may not get to all of it, so what I had suggested to her is anything we don't use, even, or even stuff we do use, if the kids are okay with it, because it's all, it's THS happening, some kids, Kate, you're going to love this, there are two students who are doing her, I think they're rocapa presidents, or model congress presidents are doing a unit, are doing some content on civic engagement. And then there's also going to be some Trumbull historical stuff, so I said to Katie, if any of that content doesn't get to air, let's get those kids back in the studio and record it, and we can use that on the station, and she can use that internally as well. So that's my hope, even if we do get it on the air, I would love to be able to pull that out and use that separately. And then the only other question I had, Kate, I can ask you this offline too, was just about dinner, I think, I forget if it was BEI or the ACE Foundation had fed everybody last year, but we can discuss that offline. So that's, that's programming.
Laura, can I ask what the timing of the programming for election night is?
We go live at 8:00 PM.
Okay.
So, and there's usually, and that's when the polls close.
Yeah.
There's about 30 minutes, so that's why the kids create some content. So, you know, again, like, here's what's been going on at Trumbull High, and then they kind of give a wrap-up of whatever they choose.
Okay.
And then.
There's students at the polls gathering the results and uploading them, so it's usually a good half an hour before we have any results to share.
Yep.
Right. So she's got, right, so each of the seven polling stations, there are two students, and they've got a Google spreadsheet. So they're going to enter the poll, the, the results into the spreadsheet, and then Vince is going to be onsite with us, he's our auditor. And he's going to compile all that, all that data into results, and then we've got kids who are going to be, I've created some graphic templates. And they're going to enter, and that's, you know, all the candidates' names for each of the different elected boards, and they're going to enter in all the results, so we can put those on screen.
Okay. Great.
Whole spreadsheet been updated?
Um, I will double-check.
Okay, once it is, can you send me the link?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep, I, I've been working on the, like, the polling site list, I have to make sure that the compiled list is updated.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on my, another to-do for you, I will get that to you.
Okay.
Kate, I'm sorry, you have a question?
I'm wondering if there's an opportunity from a marketing standpoint for us to get some pictures of our election night team putting this on the air, kind of thing?
Well, and the other thing too, again, not to jump ahead, but the student producer of the Daily Announcement News is one of the anchors. And he is, one of his assignments is a piece on election night. So he's going to try to be taking some behind-the-scenes footage, but yeah, it would be great.
Just some pictures that Amanda can use.
Yeah, stills would be great.
Because I don't know, I don't know that people really appreciate what goes into this effort.
Right.
And the more pictures that show people, like a bunch of people, you know, somebody at the board, somebody at the computer, you know, maybe, I don't know, you can figure it out.
Right, the kids in the studio getting ready, because they're coming, we're, you know, they come early. You know, we get there at like five, just to make sure, you know, to give them time to rehearse, to get them comfortable in the space, because these are students, they're not, you know, they're not professional anchors or TV presenters, yes, they compete academically, but this is, you know, it's different when you put a camera in somebody's face.
And how long are you on air for?
About an hour.
Okay.
So we're on from about eight to nine.
Okay.
We don't wait for absentee ballots and all that, we just take the poll results.
All the graph, yeah, all the graphics below just say totals are, you know, total is in-person ballots only, or something about like, does not, this does not include absentee ballots, there's something on the bottom of the graphics, I forget exactly what I had written, but it does mention that, you know, this is based on in-person results.
Okay.
And the parties are watching. Okay, so anything else on the election? So exciting, really, I'm really psyched.
I know, yes.
All right, one more question, sorry. Are any, is SES going to be able to come in and see it at all if they're not part of the videography and that?
Our only, my only concern with that is.
Space.
Yeah.
Okay.
And because we had last year, you know, again, I was talking to Katie Boland about this, it's space and just having a lot of kids without a job.
Right.
You know, that's my only concern.
Yep.
So.
Okay, super. All right, let's keep going. Technical stuff.
Yes. Oh, Bill had just texted me, he had to run to an appointment. And it's actually on my list as well. The PC in Town Hall Council Chambers had some weird, I don't know what happened, but DNR is repairing it, and it should be back tomorrow. So, and again, as I said before, Tim from DNR is coming to the studio tomorrow as well to make sure that everything we've got is up and ready to go, and he's going to give me a refresher, because I only get to do this every two years, so. By the time the next election comes, I'm like, wait a minute, what did I do last time? Yeah, like, I kind of remember, but I, yeah.
Do we know, do we know what happened with, with the, with the device at Town Hall?
It was running, when, whenever it would boot up, it would run on, like, the BIOS screen came up, so I'm not entirely sure what happens, but they came on Monday, they took the machine, and they're going to bring it back when it's ready.
All right, thank you.
So. You're welcome. As far as the server upgrade, the servers are on order. I got an email from Kayla the other day with just some, like, heads-up stuff, when I've looped Jeff in on it, because that involves their ability to remote into the servers if there's issues, and then IP addresses for my ability to access the scheduling and the server itself. So I'm going to keep Jeff and his team looped in as the installation happens, because you know, again, it's, there could be firewall issues and there could be IP address issues, so, and Jeff and his team cooperative, as always, so thank you, Jeff, I appreciate that. And then I have a note, Jens, for you know, just when that's installed, as far as file type, because we had questions about high, right now. You know, just when that's installed as far as file type, because we had questions about high def, right, right now. Um, we are recording in high def, but we are exporting videos in standard definition because that's how it's being broadcast on cable. So it's just going to be a question of, does it matter? You know, in terms of file size, whether, you know.
Right. But if, I believe cable is the smallest of our outlets. So if we're, if we're degrading the quality, you know, everywhere. It, it just seems a shame that the Facebook and the YouTube feeds aren't, uh, you know, the, the best quality.
Right. And I, it's, yeah, I need to look into, I, we did this a while ago with last time, I think in terms of file size. I don't know off the top of my head. Um. If, you know, size wise, it makes, if I just export it as it comes in, you know what I mean? As an M P A G four, if I'm.
I get it.
Yeah.
So do we have a projected, um, date for when the equipment will come in or when will be doing installation?
Uh, let me take a quick peek. What Kayla had said. Um, she said that. She doesn't have an ETA at this time, um, because the servers haven't been shipped yet. Everything's been ordered, but the shipping, it hasn't shipped.
Okay. Um. Yeah. One other thing I had under technical was the community with the library about the H T M I cable. Am I leaving this on as an issue? That we continue to follow up on, or are we just letting it go?
So I'm, I'm, I'm the one who brought it up. Um, I just bring a second camera. Uh, and record the, um, the screen. Separately. In, instead of having, I mean, because the, uh, the exposure changes dramatically when you move from, you know, the room to the screen. So. Um. I mean, that, that's a workable solution. I'm, I'm not really. That. With that solution, I'll, you know, I'd be happy with that. It would be great if they could do the other thing, but it's really not a priority.
The only other thing I can suggest Jens would be to request. That the presenter email me the slides. And then when we edit, we put those slides, you know, we edit those into the video.
It, it's just a, it's just a ton of work.
Yeah.
Um. And if you record it, you know, on, on a second camera, it, the, the timing is correct. You, you have a multi cam clip. You could just switch between the two.
Right. Which, okay. Yeah. I mean, and, and fortunately you and Garrett can do that. But again, it just depends on who the videographer is.
Okay. I get it.
So. I mean, it's appreciated. I don't mean to like, you know.
No, no, I get it. I get it. But I mean, to, to me, it's, it's not a, it's not a burning issue.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Okay. Marketing and PR, Amanda.
Hi. Um, let's see. I, I've started posting a little bit on Facebook to build up. Um. Laura got me the get out the vote, uh, segments from Katie Bullen's kids. So I'm going to start, uh, putting those up as well. And now that I have a better understanding of timing, I'll be able to, um. Handle election night and making sure that we're getting stuff out on that night. But, um. I also, I think, I think the highlights for especially this upcoming weekend should be, um, the, um. You said there's a walkthrough of the senior center. Is that available now for me to put up?
I will, I'll get that on Dropbox for you.
Okay. All right. That would be great. Um. Just, and then also the referendum information, because I think that's something that people are really going to be looking for. Um, and then also the debate that happened. Um, I want to keep pushing that out, um, as well. So, um, that's kind of the focus. And then thank you for mentioning the Thanksgiving game, because I can make sure that we do something for that. Laura, can, is there any way for me to get? Clips of like past year's games or just even B roll of. Um, the crowd, the games, something like that, so that I could use a little video.
I, what I had done, actually there's a student who's interested in doing sports for the announcements and I had uploaded, um. The games from the season for you. So I can do that as well.
Okay.
So in that folder with the get out the vote stuff, I'll, I'll upload the, um, senior center tour and I'll upload the football games. I mean, you have to scrub through them to pick stuff.
Yeah, that's fine. Not a problem.
Okay.
Awesome.
Um, and then I still need to reach out to the historical society for the rack cards. Um, and then offline, we should just, um, talk about setting up a meeting with the library to, you know, um. See what we can do there. Oh, and I did hear back from Cindy. About the possibility of adding links to. Different programs that are going out with the, uh, first electmen's, um, newsletter. So I'll reach out back to her and see what we need to do. I think she needed more specific information. Um, and a lot of it will depend upon what their content is. It's just like a support, you know, this happened and therefore. We also happen to have a video of it on T C T V. So, um, I'll work with Cindy on that as well.
Awesome.
And that's it.
Thank you so much. I, I tell you, but just to have somebody that's just. Every time, you know, okay, I'm going to promote this, I'm going to promote that. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it and how great everything looks. So.
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to be here.
I, I appreciate it too, because again, I, I can only do.
So much.
Focus on so many things. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're just, you know. You take care of stuff yourself, right? And it just gets done, which totally appreciate.
Thank you.
Okay. Trumbull High Connection.
Trumbull High Connection. As I said, Soaring Eagle Studios is up and running. Um, Jeff, you know, again, he met with the, the kids. Who are. The presidents of the club and, um. You know, there's, like I said, there's a group of really engaged kids. They've been, um, he's got a system down where he's, he's now looking for an online. System to sort of move projects through the pipeline. Right now it's all on a bulletin board, but hey, it works. So, uh, there's a whole bunch of. Stories that are in various, um, some will be recurring, some are one offs. So they're all in various stages of completion. Um, their goal is to have their first. Episode of video announcements ready to go on Friday, November eighth, and it looks like they are on track for that. They're going to record, um, today. So, and they've got a bunch of, like I said, they've got a bunch of, um. B roll pieces ready to go. So what's going to happen today is the recording in studio and then Jeff is going to edit that. Um, you know, and, and the, right now, the goal is to produce something every other week. Until they start getting things rolling and then close the, the gap between episodes and then ha- hand off responsibilities. But, um, he's doing a great job as serving as, you know, scaffolding the kids and, um, he created, like I said, he's got a really great. Structure that I think will be able to be, you know. Slowly pulled away as the kids get the hang of what they need to do. Um. So let's see. So like I said, the, um, that one of the anchors is a we the people member. So he's going to be doing a piece. On the election, which is great, because then it's, you know, sort of an embedded reporter. Um. And. I think that's pretty much it. Mike, I just gave the update about Soaring Eagle Studios. So they are on track. To have their first episode, um. Out in the real world on Friday, November eighth.
Laura, I'm also wondering if there's an opportunity with Matt Nelson and Garrett in particular, being seasoned, you know, production. Uh, professionals. To. Offer to Nick and, and Jeff, if they could be, you know, I don't know, come in and do a lecture on something or other that. Or about being a professional.
Like a guest speaker, I. I am more than happy to suggest that. Um.
I mean, Matt, would you be up for that?
I'm sure. I mean. Cause I can talk about a lot of things.
I'm sure you have some very cool stories and, and. You know, I think, I think just the more they understand like, oh, and what's it like if you're really trying to make a living at this?
Well, now is a very bad time. But by the time they get, uh, get around, um. Things will probably be a little more spread out, but now is a really, really bad time. The industry is really hurting.
Yeah.
Laura, kind of along the same lines, um. We just did a tour at Quinnipiac, uh, cause they have a huge communications journalism program there. And their focus, they have a large focus on sports broadcasting, which is why we were there. But I wonder if any connections with, um. The colleges that are in the area, because I know Fairfield University also does that too. To see if some of their professors would be willing to come in and talk to the kids as well.
I think that's a great idea. I'm more than happy to shoot an email. I'll also copy, um. I can send that to Jeff and Nick and I can copy Christina Rosati on that.
Okay.
But I know, you know, again, it's, I, I, like I said, I think it's a great idea. I know that, um. I don't know about, you know, what the timing would be. I think that'd be more like a.
Spring.
It might be more appropriate right now for the classroom.
Yeah. Oh, for, okay. For digital media itself.
But I mean, you know, again, I'll, I'll leave that up to them to decide what the best timing is. But I think that's a great idea for the kids to see. You know. To talk to people who've done it on a professional level. This is what, you know, this is what a career is like. This is what you're like, you know, this is what. The schedule was, this was what, yeah.
Well, it's even a chance for them to promote the capabilities that are available at those universities, right? To say.
Yeah.
Right. Exactly.
Here.
Right.
This is what a major looks like in it.
Exactly. Yeah. And then you, so you talk about it from the school perspective, and then you talk to people who are actually out in the field and doing the work and. You know, and most of us who started that way didn't go to school for it. So, um, but there's so many programs now out in the colleges that have grown. So just an idea.
Yeah, I'll definitely, I'm happy to pass that along.
Okay. And also from a marketing standpoint, it's nice.
Yeah.
Okay. So anything else on marketing, uh, Amanda, I mean, on Trumbull High, sorry.
Um. Not for me, no.
Okay. So, um, last thing, which is not on the agenda, but I'll put it under miscellaneous, since I need to get the twenty twenty six meeting scheduled to the town. Our cadence this year has been every six weeks. Um, is everybody okay with that? I mean, what I'll do is bring it to the next meeting. We have time to get it approved at the next meeting, but I just want to make sure. The cadence works for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll do, I'll, I'll pull that together, um, and have it for us to vote on at the December meeting. Okay.
Okay. One more thing for miscellaneous. I just wanted to bring up, we had, you and I had discussed this, um. When we create the policy, um, when we review the update and the station policies, um. I don't know if this would be part of the policy or if this would be a station procedure, but I, I think we should put something in place where, um. If it is requested that an event be livestreamed. It's, it needs to be the responsibility of the requesting party to make sure that we have a stable internet connection. Um, and I bring this up because T C T V just, yeah, just so. You guys, just so the commission is aware and you guys are aware, and Jeff, you know all about this. Um. T C T V was asked to. Livestream a speaker at Hillcrest the day after the election. Um. And I said, we are capable of doing that, but I don't have the bandwidth to do it because of all the election prep. And the reason for that. Is because, um. You know, again. There's always issues with Wi-Fi in the schools. For instance, at the first selectmen debate, anybody who was trying to watch that live saw firsthand that. I could not get a stable internet connection. So I could not stream that debate. Um, and it was incredibly frustrating for me. I'm sure it's incredibly frustrating for the viewers. Um, I did, you know, I ended up going home, editing it and putting it up that night because. It's that important and it needs to be up right away, but. It would have been really nice if that wasn't the issue. I had a hotspot with me and I couldn't get more than one bar. So had I had, you know, had I known where I could plug in, in, in an ethernet cable. It would have solved all the problems. I couldn't even get on the teacher B Y O D network and I have a login. So, um. Like I, I. My concern.
Yes. Figure out whether that's a, you know, a procedure or part of our, our, uh, policy. But yeah, we, we definitely need to figure that out.
It, it shouldn't be incumbent on me to go to every conceivable spot in town to make sure that there's stable Wi-Fi to record. Any conceivable event, you know, it would be nice if we just knew that it was going to work. So.
And I already spoke, I spoke to the League of Women Voters. Who, um, who arranged this, this event. I spoke to Laurel and I told her that. It's, it's really not good enough to just show up. On the, for them to show up on the evening of the event. Um, there was no light on the stage. The microphones weren't set up correctly. It, it was very unprepared. And I think to Laura's point. Somebody needs to do a site review. Because, I mean, it's important. It was the first selectmen debate. So somebody needs to go in at least the day before. Or work with. The, um, the people arranging it, like the, the League of Women's Voters to, to make sure that. We can actually film it because if you try to film something on a stage without lighting, that's another issue that. You know, we need to address and have checked before we go in.
Yeah, yeah. I could speak for the, um. For the Wi-Fi. I mean, nobody let us know. The teacher B Y O D is not going to handle a stream. That's, that's, you know. Basically made for people's personal cell phone to, to be able to receive texts and stuff. It's got a lot of bandwidth restrictions. A lot of, you know, connection restrictions. So that's not going to support a stream. So yeah, if they had reached out to. I, I really don't know the process when they're booking the area, but if they. If they say, you know, they need the Wi-Fi, you know, we could at least. Provide you with a more stable connection. Like when we do the, um. Graduation, we use the athletics network, which would handle the bandwidth. But yeah, you'd never be able to do that on teacher B Y O D. It wouldn't work.
Well, I'm not, I'm, through years of P T A stuff, know that there's a, you know, building in East Form, which I. I'm thinking like, hasn't been revised in a long time.
I was just going to say the same thing.
So maybe that's something we can, we can take up to say, maybe this needs, you know, it needs to be revised and add, add a couple of things that.
I believe they have revised it re, and I don't know this.
I don't think it has anything, Jeff, I don't think it has, says anything about technical, like. Technology needs, because I just filled it out for election night and they still, you know, they ask, are you serving food? Like that's the extent of the request. Like, I think, you know, do you have any specific technology needs? Cause, uh, you know, like post-prom, like there's just so many events I can think of off the top of my head that would have needs for Wi-Fi.
Well, it's changing, right? Expectations are changing. So, um, Laura, let's us figure out. Where we need to connect. Um. Jeff, we might need your support on it. I'm, I'm not asking you to do it, but we'll. Try to figure out who, uh, on Hill.
Definitely. We just, we just need a, like a. A way to bridge communication better for, especially for big events. I mean, that, that's an event that, you know, I wish I had known that it was going to be filmed there. Cause I, you know, I would have. Made sure Pete, you know, had, uh, cause we can, we can change almost anywhere in a building where a certain, um. Signals, we're doing it for the voting, you know, for, at the elementaries, you know, so we can, we can definitely move signal around and move different, uh, S S I Ds around. So yeah, definitely I would, I would support that.
Awesome. Okay. Good. Anything else, Laura or anybody else?
No, I'm just, again, just to kind of circle back to the closed captioning, I'm still. Working through the ADA compliance. It's a lot of legalese, which I. It hurts my brain to try to process, because I'm not a legal. I never went to law school. So.
I'll get it if you want.
Yeah, thank you.
I read a lot of those things.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm still, like I said, I, you know, I started and then election stuff came up. So I think once Tuesday is over. Um, and I get a good night's sleep, I will be ready to tap, to tackle some other things.
Okay. Awesome. All right. Anybody have anything else? We're humming. I feel really good about. What's going on now. I mean, we've just taken real steps forward in the last year or two. So. Thank you to the commission. Thank you to our new videographers. Matt, I'm excited to talk to you more. Mike, really appreciate the engagement for, at the high school. It's, it's huge. And Jeff, your support technically, like. Like Laura said, I mean, you just, you always, you just always help us. So thank you. Thank you so much. This is the way this is supposed to work. So that's really cool. All right. So motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jens. Thank you, Jens. Come on, Ben, you're always second. Okay, unless there's any reason not, we're gonna go with the adjournment at eight fifty nine. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you later.
Bye.
Hey, all right. Bye, guys. Matt, thanks for coming. I appreciate it. I hope this gives you a little more uh. Context.
Yes, it does.
I will, I'll talk to you later. I'll let you get on with your day.
Yeah, premiere, the captions in Premiere are super easy. I can show you that.
That's all right. I mean, it looks like it's just basically enable, you know what I mean? I just haven't actually.
Yeah, yeah, you you just have to decide what type.
Okay.
There's a pull down menu for that.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I haven't had a chance to play with it just because, you know, again, like. Million other things going on competing for my attention, but it it doesn't look like it's particularly difficult to uh. To do.
It's quite literally. It's literally uh.
Glory background on, but I can kind of.
Yeah, I don't know how to turn that on.
That's all right. I get the.
Yeah, it's just, it's, never mind.
Yeah, I again, I think it's gonna be more just a, you know, like letting whoever, you know, whoever's editing that particular piece, like, hey, guys. Here's a new policy for editing. Make sure you enable this with these settings, the same way that I, you know, we have settings for compression or. You know, when I edit a a government meeting, you put this lower third on, so it's just one more.
It's, yeah, bum, bum, bum.
Yeah, it looks pretty standardized, so. All right, thank you. And then, like I said, I will um. I have the, like, what I'm thinking of proposing for the streaming put together. And I'm, like I said, I'm open to suggestions because I don't like creating things in a vacuum.
Well, yeah, we can talk better.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, well, I'll let you get on with your day, but thanks for stopping in. I appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, I'll see you later.